Good evening and welcome. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Planning Board, and I have not just a quorum, but all members are present. I call the meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations. All materials for this meeting have been posted on our website, which is needhamma.gov. The first item in our agenda is a review of a landscape plan at the property 920 South Street, the definitive subdivision. However, that has been postponed to another time. I understand, Lee, that we're waiting for an updated plan, landscape plan?
Yes, we're going to get a revised landscape plan.
Okay.
And I have a question about the landscape plan.
Yes.
Will the landscape plan be prepared by a landscape engineer?
We've asked for that.
I certainly hope so. We get to approve the plan. I would feel reluctant to approve a plan that's not prepared by a landscape architect.
We've asked him.
Excuse me, I said engineer, landscape architect.
Yes, we've asked him to retain that person.
Anyone else anything on this? So that brings us now to...
Do you have to take attendance in your speech?
I think I did already. We're all present.
Oh, okay. He's got his bevels.
I heard him start the meeting and then go right into number one, so.
No, I heard him. He said, "We have quorum."
We had quorum, yeah. I mean, I can do the long version if you wish, but I think we can probably get out of here. Maybe 30 minutes, it might be a miracle.
I was wondering. I shouldn't have had that conversation.
I know.
He won't have anything to write about.
So he can always find something. So looking back, the next item on our agenda is the Planning Board recommendation for the Affordable Housing District and the related map change. I look back at the hearing that we had last week, and I also gave thought to the comments that we received at our community meeting, which was more, better, well-attended, actually. And I guess we could categorize, I'm going to categorize the comments, and then I'm going to focus those comments and our decision ahead of us. So we received a number of questions and comments that related to property management. That's not in the jurisdiction of the zoning and our recommendation tonight, so there's no need to discuss those comments. There was also considerable discussion and concern and question about elements of what would be regarded as the site plan aspects, but we're not approving a specific project, so there's nothing for us. I will say that I recognize that residents in that area who have a particularly high water table are concerned about stormwater management. We've all on this board have recognized that that's a legitimate concern, and the municipality is already looking to improve its stormwater management, certainly in that area. And furthermore, if there is an application in front of us, we'll deal with site plan elements, including stormwater management, at that time. Then there are questions really related to the zoning, and the comments that we had about the zoning, in addition to those in support of the zoning changes, related to the height and density. There was concern about traffic, but we also understand that there's already an existing, there's a low number of cars in the development, and an additional increase of 95 cars. Again, we're getting into the specifics of the development, and that's really outside, but I think the parking ratio that we set was reasonable in the zoning bylaw. And so I want to just open this conversation up to my colleagues. I'll start on this side of the table. Artie, do you have any comments on the use either by, you know, with a site plan, by right with site plan review, or any of the dimensional regulations that, or any other element of the zoning that you want to speak to?
No, I mean, I think we've been fairly concerning about and looking closely at this and listening to the neighbors and what's been going on. And there's been changes to the height, and the developers and the architects have listened to what's been going on and what could be done as far as the height, and as you said, the ratio of the parking. I know there were some comments as far as the parking in the front or the back, and, you know, we don't have the final plan of where that's going to be. And we heard some rationale of why it's one way or the other is better or not better. But when it comes time to that, then we'll be able to decide that part of it. But I think we've been pretty thoughtful in what's been going on, and so I have no questions right now. But I have appreciated the neighbors' concerns and where they've come from. I have. If I could wave a mazda one and satisfy everyone, I would. But we do have to move forward.
Thank you. Natasha?
So I agree with Artie, and I appreciate all the comments, especially the ones that are not as evident as others about specifically the one about the people that were living in the area, that they could continue to live there. So I only have one question, and I also looked at all the front setbacks on the street, and I feel the front setback of 40 is appropriate because all the houses are, you know, within that 40 feet or... The one question that I have is the front setback shall be landscaped, and there's a vegetative buffer area, but the side setbacks, the parking areas are set back five feet from the side lot line, but it doesn't require a landscape buffer. But if there's a house next to it, I feel like maybe we should consider adding a landscape buffer on the side because the parking is only five feet away.
Do we have a site plan at all handy to see where the...
Are you able to pull that up?
On the right side, if you're looking at the building as proposed, on the right side, a additional Housing Authority development.
Correct, but on the left.
On the left side, is there a single-family home nearby that would be...
Or we can look up as well, Google Maps.
Natasha, did you say five feet? Just want to confirm, my understanding, you said five feet or...
The building is 25 feet, which is fine. The parking area must be set back at least five feet from the side lot line. So I felt like that was still pretty, that's the size of this table. It was still pretty close to, if you have a single-family residence next to you, to have.
Yeah, so I think we might have flotaled over that dimension because I don't think any of the parking was showing it that close, and so we were maybe not paying attention to that five-feet dimension.
So where it says Linden, that's where it ends, and then the next one is that house.
Sorry, I'm just going to share the screen.
So that you have where it says Linden Street, right there, that's the gap between the property and the...
Can you zoom in on that and go to satellite view?
So the question is whether...
I really can't see very well. Am I doing the right...
Let me go over and...
If you click right there, you get the satellite view.
Yeah, if you click here.
Okay.
We need binoculars. Right, so this is the edge, and there's a family house there.
Can you zoom in on that a little bit more, please?
Is that a single, that's a...
That's a single-family.
Not a Housing Authority house.
Right.
I wonder where the lot line is.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If you will, I can point.
So for the record, Reg Foster, the Chair of the Needham Housing Authority, is present, and he's going to show us in the room while Alex is able to track it with her mouse.
The side lot line is right here, northwest. This is a piece of town-owned land right here in between, and then there's the neighbor here. So there's actually a vegetated buffer that's there, or it's like marsh, it's where the water comes and runs down here and causes unfortunately some flooding problems and stuff like that. So that, if you, you know, I can in a minute pull up one of the site plans from the submissions we've already had, if you need it.
It would be helpful to see those lot lines.
This is the whole area that is going to be a green space. So, yeah, remember? So the building actually starts right around here and goes down further. So there's this much buffer, not five feet. The parking area is up in here in the front here, and, you know, whether the parking, so the parking is, you know, one version is on the Linden Street with both cars, and the other one is one up here and one down there.
Yes, Paul.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate what Mr. Foster is saying, but what he's talking about are the current site plans that are under consideration, and we're not voting on those.
Yes, exactly.
We're not presenting those to town meeting. That can change. They can be moved. They can decide to put a parking lot up in that area when they come to us. And that's exactly what Natasha is talking about, is if the parking lot is up there, she wants to, she's questioning whether we should have, in the zoning article, a five-foot buffer, vegetated buffer between the lot line and the parking. And my question for Lee is, can we cover that under Site Plan Review? Or is that kind of a buffer, something that really needs to be in the zoning article and can't be handled up under Site Plan Review?
Well, I think we should probably cover it in this article because I think the Site Plan Review section has parking lot setback requirements under Section 513, and I think it's actually going to be even narrower than this, so.
And it's not...
It sounds like you already have the buffer, so even if we put it in here, you already even have it naturally.
But that's...
Right, but I'm saying I don't think it's going to...
But there's nothing that assures that. So to your point, it could be...
So it should be added. If you want to change that dimension, we should change it.
It's not a question of changing the dimension. It's a question of requiring a vegetated buffer between the parking lot and the sidewalk.
Oh, you're looking at it differently. You're looking at it differently, but before, Jean wanted to also speak.
Yes, I believe you said that there's a strip of town-owned land, not Housing Authority land, separating the Housing Authority property from the home. And I think it was also said that that is a particularly wet strip, and that it seems that that provides a sufficient buffer for that direction to protect that home. And it would be good to see a plan that does in fact show that strip, so we really feel sure of it. And then on the other side, it's really the Housing Authority's own land, and in the back, that's, of course, that's the rear setback, that's also a wetland area. So that's my feeling. I mean, it's not a big deal. People want to require landscaping and want to require a larger setback, but I hesitate, I just don't know if it's needed.
So just to review and for clarity, we're talking about two options. One is we preserve the existing setback, but the parking setback, we could increase from five to 10 feet, or, I think, or some other number, or in the zoning, more specifically, speak to a vegetated buffer on either that side or both sides.
Well, I'm reading it differently. I'm reading it that either we add a vegetated buffer, or if there's town land separating it, and that's the only location, then we don't really have to do anything.
Yeah, this way I'm learning that there's town-owned land.
I was just saying, if, I didn't know where the property line was, so I was trying to protect that general residence or the residence. But if there's a chunk of town land, that, then...
That's not likely to be developed, it sounds like.
It's not likely to be developed. I would be fine without having it.
So that's a function of the condition of the land. It's not a function of zoning, so...
No, it is, because if the property line was here, right, I'm just saying that there's something here, so it's easy to see how far it is. But if the property line was here, and then you have a car parked right there, it's just in the house, right, that he's saying that there's a buffer, so we just have to confirm the buffer.
And is that buffer considered, is that buffer considered wetland?
Sorry, what, sorry, Alex, what's...
Alex, how do you bring up the...
On the site plan?
Okay.
Okay. Well, you do that, Artie, you were saying...
No, it's not like it's wet, but is that buffer considered like wetland? Would they be allowed to build a parking lot that close to that buffer?
You raised the issue. Natasha, what's your preference?
Preference for what?
For, do you see a need for a solution? And if so, what's the solution that you recommend?
I think they were just going to show us the buffer. I mean, if there's a buffer already, and that's the only buffer, I'm okay with that.
I don't want to overrepresent it, but I want to show you the exact information, okay? So now, scroll back down, pull that one down. And you point, that's what you need, here. All right, so drag it, took the drag down, here, 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 stop. This is the piece of town, oh, sorry, that's the wrong place. Whoops. This is it right here, so, so...
Can you repeat that again?
Right there.
Is your Linden Street?
And this is where the green space would be here. And I don't know whether you can do a dimension on that, you know, how to do that.
Yeah, you can measure, there's a tool right there.
This here, and then over here, this, there's this property here. So if you want to just, you know, I don't know what width of the street is. I mean, I think the street is actually, what, 20 feet wide?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is probably 10 feet wide or something like that.
I mean, if that's the case, I'm fine with it because you already have that town buffer. You don't have a car on top of other property. I, I, in my opinion, I love it.
Zero miles is what it is.
Yeah, well, you've got to convert the measurement, that's all. There you go.
Eight and a half feet. So we were saying a five-foot buffer. That's already an eight-foot buffer, and the parking is five more, so that's 13. So I'd be fine without it. I just wanted to bring it up just because it was so close to the house.
And this neighbor here, this is just their backyard here, and this is where the flooding takes place in this backyard, like four feet of it.
Okay, so does anyone else see a problem in need of a solution?
If I, it's my turn to speak, I want to say is, I don't want to say that those residents who spoke about concern about relocation of existing residents and whether they'd be protected in the amount of rent they would pay, that their concerns are not relevant to the zoning. The reason they're relevant to the zoning is that those speakers were saying, "We don't want this rezoned. We don't want it redeveloped. We want to leave it the way it is." Not that I agree with that point of view, but I think the fact that they are speaking about their preference to keep things the way they are because they're afraid of change. And I think that letter that was provided to us yesterday is very helpful in addressing those concerns about the protections that the residents have under the law, to have their need for continuing to live either if the partners are available onsite in a different building, or if they have to move offsite. One thing I wasn't sure of in reading the letter, and if I may, I'll ask the question. I haven't handled a relocation case for maybe 15 years, and I'm in a domain case in the town of Millis, but do, if the persons have to be relocated to, say, market-rate housing for a temporary period of time with the expectation they'll move back, is it part of the obligation under the relocation rules that the extra rent be paid for by the Housing Authority?
Yes.
Yes, I thought so. My memory was that is correct.
No, no, how do pocket costs at all, in fact? In other words, packing, unpacking, moving, you know, et cetera. We have a quite sizable budget already laid out for that in the overall development budget for those costs.
Yes, that's what I thought. So people are very highly protected. Their moving costs are paid for and everything.
Right. Do you have any other comments?
And, oh, no, and I agree with the comments that I think you said, Adam, that stormwater management is something that will be dealt with as far as the site plan review and as far, of course, as compliance with the Morse. And there's been a lot said about stormwater management recently in our town, and my, as I recall, we tightened our stormwater management rules in recent years. The flooding that may be occurring because of development that occurred 30, 40, 50 years ago shouldn't be occurring now because of any new development, because of the tighter rules.
Oh, we're actually reviewing them again.
And reviewing them again.
To further strike, to further strike.
Exactly.
But with climate change, I mean, the storms are just more intense.
Yes, so I really think that the town is addressing that, and special care will be made for this project, so I agree that that will be dealt with at the time of site plan review.
And just for clarity, are you satisfied with Natasha's comment about the setback and with the buffer as a result of municipal problems?
Yes, and I reviewed the zoning, and the way it was reworded, I think, is very helpful with the chart rather than the table.
Yeah, I think, I don't know what else.
Right, much clearer.
Thank you. Paul, do you have any comment or question about the zoning at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just one comment about Natasha brought up a good point, and that is we should at least consider from a good modeling standpoint of practice that we're, you know, the fact that town land is there, but I think we should perhaps, from a good modeling standpoint, assume that town land isn't there, and what would we want on this zoning? I think that's how, I think that's how we should proceed. Would we want this parking five feet from the parking lot? Would we want it there to begin with? And I think that's how this should, it's not going to have any harm to the project whatsoever, but I think from a practice standpoint, I mean, I think we should address number two and three here personally.
Let's take it from the point of view of what if sometime in the future, the Housing Authority went to the town and asked them to convey that strip of land to the Housing Authority to add eight and a half feet to, you know, because they want to expand the parking lot. So if we want to increase the setback from the parking lot from five feet to 10 feet, I'd have no problem with that. If we wanted to put something in to say that it needed to be a landscaped buffer, I'd have no problem with that either.
So one thing, Artie, thanks for bringing this up, and thanks for the clarifying comments, Paul. One of the things that came up early in the process was a question about whether or not the town made a future point, utilize that space as part of its own improvement for stormwater management in that area, in which case, I don't know if, I'm just kind of thinking extemporaneously, if it should be done by way of a vegetated barrier, a vegetated buffer, because we don't know what that future improvement by the town could be, and that it would be limited by this zoning would just, I think, would not be a reasonable thing. So I'm on that basis, more inclined to suggest a 10-foot setback for parking as opposed to a vegetated buffer, so there's more flexibility either for the town or for the Housing Authority.
Natasha, it's a good point.
So on that basis, I think I'm inclined to recommend a change to a 10-foot barrier for the parking. Before I do, I'd like to actually ask counsel for the, Bob Smart for the Needham Housing Authority, they have a few comments. If you'd actually come to the table and speak on the microphone, please.
I've got a couple of sections of the zoning bylaw that, you may not consider to be applicable. One is Section 5.1.3, subsection, subsections J and K.
5.1.3?
5.1.3J parking setbacks, and 5.1.3K landscaped areas.
Yes.
And that, that says, I think it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the six, starting in the sixth line in subsection J, at least in this version, it says, it says, "Parking spaces in neighboring aisles and driveways shall be set back a minimum of four feet from the rear and side lot lines." Now, that's 5.1.3. Now, generally speaking, now, just to be fair, generally speaking, you don't have parking lots in residential areas. So, okay, and then subsection of park, get back to that in a second, and then subsection K, it says, "Setback areas required under the above paragraph J shall be maintained as landscaped areas, except for driveway openings or sidewalks per," and talks about trees, shrubs, flowers, and grass, and planted plants, okay? So that's one, that's one section of the bylaw that you might look at by analogy. The other is, if you look at the apartment districts, apartment districts in 4.3.1 and 4.3.3, around the age of, you know, about a four-year-old virgin, as far as possible, but numbers have changed. I don't know that they have.
Dimension regulations for apartment districts, table of regulations?
That's, go 4.3.1. Good, okay, so, you know, this tells, if you look at A1, you say A1 is sort of the appropriate analogy here, we talked about that previously, that's 18 units per acre. You've got the side, front side and rear setbacks of 25, 20, and 20. And then in section 4.3.3, open space, park it says, it talks about, the first sentence talks about the front setback area is supposed to be kept open in lawn or landscaped, unparked on and unbuilt upon, except for driveways and walks. And then it says, "The area between a lot line and a line five feet from or parallel thereto should be kept open and in lawn or landscaped, unparked on and unbuilt upon." So basically, you've got a five-foot landscaped area under the apartment district.
Excuse me, doesn't, I thought that this section, 4.3, applies to these three apartment districts, A1, A2, and A3?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
It does.
So how are you carrying it over to...
No, he's just saying comparatively.
Oh, comparatively.
No, I thought the same thing Jean said. I thought you said it's covered everywhere else, but it doesn't...
No, he's just saying comparatively.
Comparatively, okay.
So this is a 20 percent... I think if you want a landscape, you should probably, you should probably use your language if you have any apartment district.
Now, how would, what if there's a scenario where some of that 8.9 feet is used by either the Housing Authority or the municipality as part of stormwater management, and it's not really, can't put trees on it or shrubs on it?
One other question is, is this affordable housing, is that only for that site, or could that be in a different district at some other point? I mean, I'm sorry.
We have, the district is created, and then separately, there's a, right now, a corresponding map change for where that includes that district.
Right.
So we're not including, extending that district to other geography.
Right, but I understand that. So I understand the map for this one, but there could be a map, we could create another, the same district somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yes.
So wouldn't we want it just to have something more generic, so...
Yes, you would.
Not specific to this particular site.
Correct, which is effectively what Artie was saying, and he's right. That's why, you know, you've identified a problem. I think we should consider it and come up with a solution.
So are we talking about taking the language from Section 4.3.3 that has to do with open space in the apartment A1 and A2 district, and putting that same language in this footnote? language in this footnote on, on setback?
Yes, I think, yes, I think.
Yeah, that's what Leah was saying, I think.
Yeah, I think maybe either if you want to increase it to ten, you could, and then you could just basically indicate that the area between that lot line and whatever distance you chose was, parallel to that lot line was to be kept open and in lawn or landscape and on built upon.
So I tend to agree with the, with the former, but I have a question about the mechanics of the latter part of your comment, about whether, if you have a stormwater, if you have stormwater management, a system there that includes part of that land, and we have some kind of a vegetated
Says lawn or landscape.
Right, so.
Lawn or landscape.
It's a parking buffer, so if the parking is, parking is a, if there's no parking to put there, then you don't need a buffer for parking.
That's the parking's back here.
So it's not even gonna, you know.
Yeah, but we're covering the possibility.
You're covering the possibility.
They change the plans and they decide to put a, a
And, and to Natasha's most recent point, which is absolutely correct, that, you know, let's say three years from now, a future planning board creates another map change to extend this district in other parts of the town, we still want to be able to handle that eventuality.
Without having to change the zoning.
Without having to, exactly.
Just do another overlay, let's say there's another piece of land.
So my, I like the concept where the board seems to be heading with what Leah is suggesting. My only concern is that if you have, I don't know, because I'm not, I, I'm not a landscape architect, that if this, for instance
Are you gonna draw it?
You know someone who might have a little better skill than I do? So if, forgive me, this is so rudimentary, and I don't know if Needham Channel can pick up on my drawing here or not, but, well, there's a camera there, sometimes they've done that, it's been fun. So we're saying that this is, this property belongs to that house, there is a municipal piece here, and then the rest of it is the Needham Housing Authority, and then there's a twenty-foot buffer, twenty-five foot, sorry, setback, but you could have offset from there five feet here, you could have parking. That's how this bylaw is currently written. My point is
Isn't it ten feet parking or something?
No, no, it's five, our, our zoning
Side and rear is five, and front is ten.
We're talking about changing it to ten.
So, so, so now, if at some point, the area between here and here is utilized with some kind of subsurface stormwater management system, I don't know what is on top of that. You can't, it's, sometimes it's grass, but it's gotta be able to be ripped up, it can't be trees and shrubs, because you've gotta be able to access through the manholes and through the other systems to be able to deal with it.
But you're designing something, but this is zoning, for generic zoning for any district that you're designing for a specific site. They need to come up with it, we're not designing for a specific site.
Well, what I'm saying is, I wonder in this eventuality, as with all eventualities, maybe we should increase that parking to ten feet.
Okay.
Well, that's what we're going to tend, so yeah, so I think, I think in many sense we increase it to ten.
I think we have consensus to increase.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, great, so, okay.
On the side and the rear.
On the side and the rear, sure.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Red, would you like to come to the table and
Sure. So, you spoke of the option A and the option B, option A with the two parking lots on the front, and option B with the parking on the rear. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm winging it here, but I think if you take ten feet away from where that parking lot, from the rear lot line, then that eliminates option B.
Or taking five feet away, because we already said
Taking five feet away, you're eliminating option B, but, you know, obviously we don't have experts here. This is kind of like a site plan review.
Do you think parking on option B is that close to the
Yes, yes.
Isn't it wetland?
No, but we're talking, we're talking about from the lot line, the, the back of the units are not ten feet from the lot line, they're, they're twenty-five, thirty-five.
I, I'm winging it, I'm just trying to say
Plus, there's, plus there's wetlands.
You have wetlands back there.
No, no, I know, I realize.
But what he's, what he's, he's not talking about the building.
I understand, talking about the parking, there's two parking in the front, parking in the back.
I may be wrong, I'm just trying to point out
The building's here, the parking's here, you can have wetland up to here, and that's
It may not have any effect.
There was, I can't, I can't imagine any effect of having it, having it gone to from the back to send feet for the parking. Your parking is not ten feet from the lot line.
My, my question.
So it's not ten feet from the lot line.
My, my question.
Should we just keep it to the ten, to the side?
Can you go back to that and slow down so that we can see the rear lot lines?
A little bit farther up.
So may I just continue my point?
Ten feet.
So, we're, we're talking about a landscape vegetative buffer, and that means you have to plant something within the twenty-five foot zone. And so, again, I just don't know, I'm just pointing out that we, we don't know, we don't have experts here, that, you know, what the impact is, I think, on the rear lot. What, what I do know is it's a narrow skinny lot and there, there is a twenty-five foot BVW line that's causing lots of heartburn, trying to make everything work, it's why the building is wiggly in part, and, just pointing that out.
Yeah, that, that area from one forty-one maple
Yes.
down to one sixty-nine maple
Pretty narrow.
Is pretty narrow.
The top part there.
But don't you, don't you have a fire road, fire access road going around there?
Yes, and that's another factor, yes.
Okay, but there's already a fire access road going around there.
The road doesn't go all around the back, it just goes to the side so that you have enough hose pull, so you can pull your hoses and put your ladders up at the back.
But I mean, your, your parking, your parking wasn't going to that, wasn't going in between one sixty-nine and one seventy-five, your parking was setting, was behind one seventy-five to one ninety-nine, that's where your parking was, your parking wasn't setting up near the, near the, near the narrow section.
No, it's on the lower part, as we look at it here, yeah.
Parking wasn't near that, that
Just
You're trying to pull it up? Yeah, that would be helpful, let's see.
Yeah, that'd be very useful, actually.
Is it?
Yes, I mean, I think, I think a ten-foot parking setback could cause, could cause a problem with location of the, of that parking lot, if there's gonna be a parking lot in the back, because we have a number of constraining factors. It's, 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 it's narrow, you've got to avoid wetlands, you've got to, you know, so it's
We're only talking initially about the side. This whole, the rear
Some, some change also went to the rear.
Yeah, so let's
And we weren't really talking about
Yeah, because we were trying to mash
So let's leave it at five feet for the rear.
I would, I would leave it at five feet because we're trying to promote parking in the back of the building anyway.
Right.
That's right.
So I would keep it five in the back and then ten on the side.
Ten on the side.
Okay.
You don't think ten on the side causes any problems at all?
I can't think of any.
Okay, so thank you for your comments. So Leah, are you, are you clear in the change that we're making?
Yes.
We're preserving the rear, the only change that we're making is the parking buffer on the sides would go from five to ten feet.
Right.
And we're going to add the language from four point three point three about, about open space.
Should be kept open in, in a lawn or landscape.
Area between a lot line and a line five feet from
Right, except for driveways and walks, the
No, that was, that was only for this front setback, so for the side
Right, the area between a lot line and a line five feet from a parallel there too shall be kept open in lawn or landscape, unparked on and unbuilt upon.
And it would be ten feet in the side.
We're gonna make a ten feet in, in the description.
Not that I would require it to be landscaped, because it could be in a
It's lawn or landscape.
Right, that's true, the or gives you the flexibility.
It's lawn or landscape.
So you rip up the lawn, get to the manhole, and then you plant seed.
What, what would be, would be hardscape, that's what, which is
Yeah.
Or trees.
And actually, what they would usually do is they would decap the lawn in a way that they could
Another one.
Put a sod right there.
Right there, plats it or something.
Like when they get into my septic system.
Yeah, 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 they take a piece of
They, they take a piece of lawn, yeah.
I see what you mean. Okay, so
It's pretty far from the parking line.
It's pretty far from the, yeah.
It's pretty far.
Pretty far.
But I don't mind the five feet, because we're trying to, we're trying to encourage rear parking, so I think
Yeah, we're not talking about anything on the rear.
No, but we were just double checking.
Yeah.
It should be fine, I don't see anything.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty far from the property line.
And this, my question, this is parking here though, right, so this one's pretty close.
Well, is that a side, I guess?
Yeah, but that's a side, it's not
That's a side.
Okay.
And
We're talking about side.
Yeah, I know, we are talking about side.
You're right, that is a concern.
The other one, and there's, that's the only one that I see, this is the
Right, yeah, and, and the housing authority could move that forward too if they had to.
And you have your red BVW lines, and so we're, we're doing contortions trying to like stay out of the twenty-five foot zone.
What's that, front or the
Well, that's an interesting question.
That's front and the
I mean, I, you could, it's hard to apply the standard definition of side and front to that building. You could interpret that where it says sixty feet there is either, either a front or a side setback here.
Actually, while you're standing up there, I'm looking at that very narrow setback, kind of at the back of the building, no, not that building, the other one.
The thirty-two feet.
Right there, how many feet is that?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Oh, it's thirty-two, okay.
Yeah, forty-three.
Right.
Mr. Chair, but I, I would request that you leave the setback at five feet, rather than impose a stricter requirement for an affordable housing district than a for-profit apartment, why, why require a greater sideline setback for this than, than for that?
Because we're, I guess, to
Because this is my right.
We're talking about, I'm talking about the park, this is the parking, this is the parking setback.
In part because you have a greater parking demand because you've got a bigger dent and you've got a bigger building. So, and I'm not adverse to the, applying the standard to private property, we're just dealing with it now as a result of this redevelopment, but you raise a valid question.
May I ask you another question, because you all know much more than I, is, is there, when you actually have the real plan in front of you as opposed to this, as everybody said, it could be different, is there no way of sort of dealing with that
Yes, there is.
At the time, rather than
Site review.
Yeah, and just saying, hey, you know, I know it says five foot here, but our condition is that we want that to be ten feet on
No, you can't, because you have a passive right development.
But there, but there are, we can, because it's site plan review, I thought we talked about that, that we do have some
Yeah, but now they're meeting the dimensionals, I mean, they're meeting the dimensional standards. This is not special permit use and
Yes, that's correct, but I thought that we need to mitigate on-site, we still have the authority under site plan review to do that.
Because of the hardship.
I don't know that we do, I don't, I don't know that we have the right to
The authority.
To decrease the setback.
So, so what if we keep the five-foot setback but have a buffer, which is what I recommended originally, right?
Or what if we had, what if we had a, a ten-foot setback with the right to grant a waiver
Oh, that's better.
Up to five feet.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Or the other way around, either way, but you can have the power to do it, because I don't think the absolute site plan review requirement for the funding would apply to whether it's five or ten feet for the parking lot, that would
Right.
No, you could do it that way, you could require it to be ten feet and allow the, and by, by special permit, allow them to bring it down to five, if you're concerned about that dimension.
I don't know, we will have a concern, yeah, yeah, probably nine and a half, yeah. It's already ten feet.
Yeah.
It might, it might be, it might be a waiver, it might be
Actually, it, somebody sent me a text of that effect, but it's really not.
That would be applicable to all other
Somebody sent me a text, a help, helping text, that says actually nine point seventy, but I don't think it's that precise, the GIs is not
We don't have to do that, we, we can create another district and call it, you know
That's true, too.
I found, anyway.
Affordable housing two.
Right.
Like we have, you know, apartments one, two, and three, we could have affordable housing one, two, and three.
Right, right, sure.
Okay.
So
I kind of, I kind of like that idea of, we have a ten-foot side, we, we have a ten-foot rear setback, a ten-foot side and rear setback with the planning board having the authority to grant a waiver up to five feet.
So just before we, we like kind of vote that in some kind of informal form and make the change more, more permanently, let's just go back and review, review the problem.
Challenge.
So the, so the, so the, so the, you, so you brought this up, and you're concerned, you brought it up specifically because there was a house next door.
The others, just in general, because I'm trying to be mindful that this building is a lot larger than anything else that's on the street besides this school.
And so therefore, should a, by that concept, a larger building as a result
But the building would remain in the same location, this is only parking.
Right, but you, but you brought this up, so I'm just trying to substantiate the rationale that if, and what you're saying is because it's a larger building, the parking setback should be further, should be doubled.
No, I said, I said that
Or vegetated.
We had vegetation in the front, but we didn't have it on the side, and there could be residence, residences, single-family residences adjacent to it.
Yes.
So then I said, can we add a buffer to that five feet?
Which is the other five feet, or to make the original
Then somebody brought up ten feet, I brought up, keep it five, but with a buffer.
But vegetated.
Right. And then the other option is ten feet.
Without a buffer.
Without a buffer.
Without a buffer and with a waiver. What is better policy, Lee?
She was looking.
You're not on the spot. We're supposed to set policy, not Lee.
I
Yeah, but what is she, which, which one?
Oh, the strategy of, of, of the higher one and coming down to the five?
You know, I ask, the town had obviously had a reason to set it at five feet before, knowing that this would not be the only commercial application with a residential property next door. So I, to Paul's point, I asked Lee specifically because she has the institutional knowledge of what the rationale for the five, original five feet
No, I don't, that district really, way predates me, I'm not, I'm older, but I'm not that much of a
I didn't mean to imply anything about age, just for the, for clarity, but I appreciate the humor.
So, I mean, what if we have the ten feet, and with a, with a waiver can go down to five feet, but then there needs to be that five-foot buffer?
Both?
No, yeah, no, if it, if it goes down to five, if it goes down to five feet, no, not, not adding the buffer, if it goes down to five feet, there has to be vegetation between the parking and the lot.
I, I would want to limit it, because maybe land, a lawn might be fine, I don't want to be in a
I think, I, I think that if We have the discretion to grant a waiver, because, you know, Natasha said, well, what if it's nine and a half feet, you know, they just need a five, you know, a half a foot waiver, or a one foot waiver. I would, I would think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, I would think that if we've got the discretion to reduce
It gives flexibility.
To reduce it to five feet, we can condition that waiver on its being buffered.
With vegetation, sure.
And based on the site in the future
Just as an, an operations law.
Yeah, just as, you know, because we're exercising a discretion, so, so, so we can, we can have a reasonable restriction on the discretion, on the
Let me confer with my attorney. Jean, what do you think?
Oh, I, I think the rationale is fine, I'm trying to think of the process, I think
Before we go farther He's saying that you're his attorney, do you have malpractice? Before we go farther, he's saying that you're his attorney, do you have malpractice insurance?
I'm not an attorney. In fact, I just changed my status, I just changed my status from inactive to retired, so. No, the only thing I'm thinking of is how do you word it to say that you have this waiver that you can grant through the site plan review process, that seemed to be what you were talking about.
That's right.
And I just was in my brain, I was trying to think of how to word that, it's like, seems like an unusual kind of provision to have.
It is, because usually a special permit to waive something, you know.
Exactly, waiving parking or waiving anything essentially.
See, I mean, usually the board may grant a special permit, reducing the minimum, you know, setback, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Required to X.
Would that really create a problem?
I don't think it does, I, I don't think there's any law that would prevent you from doing that.
From, from, from setting, setting a ten-foot setback for parking area and with the authority to waive it down to five, I, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any body of law that says that that requires a special permit.
So, but you're.
We're doing it under the language that we're putting in, it says we have the authority to waive.
Yeah, but there's no such other language in the entire text of the bylaw, and the bylaw is structured as done by a special permit process everywhere else.
Well, you know. Well, but, you know, site plan review doesn't even exist under the zoning, under the zoning act.
Well, it exists under our zoning, you mean, it doesn't exist.
Well, right, it's, it's, it's a creature, it's, it's a creature of the municipality that establishes.
Yes.
And then, wait, hold on a second.
So we have the authority.
I think you do.
We talked about this the other night, Gee and Lee, about the M B T A communities and anything that's as of right, the site plan review and the special permit. Have to be separate when it's as of right, is that correct?
So the site, as, when it's as of right.
Didn't Chris Heep, didn't Chris Heep give us this whole?
This is going to trigger a major project site plan special permit under section seven-four of our bylaw, it's not like what we're doing under the M B T A communities act, it's going to have a building that's in excess of ten thousand square feet, so it's going to come in under a major project site plan special permit and be processed under, under those provisions.
For a use allowed by right.
For a use allowed by right, right.
And there, and as, wait a second, and as a result of that special permit. Managing the site plan process, we, couldn't we then waive it, that's what I was getting at originally.
Well, you waive it, but you waive it under, you, you created a dimensional standard in your bylaw, you know, about what the parking has to be set at, you said there has to be so far away from a property line, now if you want to basically deviate from that, then the way that's been done everywhere else in the bylaw is, it's like a sentence that says. You know, the planning board has the right to basically waive this down by special permit to a certain standard.
Right, and that's not a site plan review special permit authority.
No, that's, that's a waiver to a dimensional requirement that you have to an answer right.
Which is a separate authority under, as a special permit.
Yeah, that's how it's structured.
Great question, underlying question attached it.
No, we, Chris Heep talked to us about this question.
Forty-seven. Still hung up in my mind, sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue, where we got into trouble, where, where we got into trouble because the judge in that case was focusing in on the words special permit.
Yeah.
Because our site plan review is a site plan special permit.
And it doesn't even say, because I know that their cases that have to do with, with site plan review, it's saying, if the process is a special permit process. But that's different, our, I mean, that's not what our bylaw says, I say, says. In accordance with the terms of a special permit for such project after site plan review, it's really very clear that we're requiring a special permit. For these projects because of their size. And when we go forward with the M B T A communities act, undoubtedly, we're also going to be revising our special permit provisions, because we can't apply these special permit provisions.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna have a sep- separate, separate set of standards.
We'll have a separate set of standards, so that's what puzzles me about a wa- a waiver. If we could say we're going to issue a waiver as a special permit.
Why can't the, why can't the waiver be part of the site plan special?
Well, it could be part of a special, but it's still a special permit, that's what I mean.
Yeah, but.
Well, I'm saying that structurally, why we should be, be amending our site plan provisions, why, the dimensional requirement.
We're not amending our site plan provisions, we're, this is part of.
We're not doing that.
The new section, whatever.
Well, th- these are the dimensional standards in this section of the bylaw, and you're saying that the setback on the property line for the parking is ten feet, and so.
Which, which can be waived down to, down to five feet. By, by the.
By what process?
By the planning board.
And what standard, there doesn't there need to be some kind of an objective standard?
No, because it's discretionary.
Well, but it's by special permit, if you're, you see.
Well, we already have this, the whole, the whole project is going to go through a site plan review as it's worded in section seven-four in our bylaw right now.
Right.
That is discretionary, requires a special permit, and.
But there's nothing in that language, but, but there's nothing in section seven-point-four that allows us to grant a waiver of dimensional requirements.
Well, not expressly, no.
Well, I don't, well, I don't, I don't know.
And we got in trouble doing that before, so you're right, I mean, if we're going to grant a waiver, we should say so, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, at sixteen eighty-eight, we, we weren't waiving a requirement, we were expanding a requirement.
But I don't, I don't think, yeah, that's true too, that's true, of course, that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
But all I'm saying is, when the, the process for granting the waiver is the site plan approval process.
Well, that's where Lee is getting hung up.
Site plan approval process is in section seven-point-four.
Lee is having trouble doing that, Lee is, Lee is saying it has to be a special appli, a separate application.
No, it's, it's part of that application, but it's, it's a special permit that you're, you're, it's a special permit that you're granting the waiver on, I mean.
As opposed to Attorney Smart's argument, where because there's already a site plan authority for the municipality, now under that, now under that authority, as a site plan review. We can, we can grant the waiver if it's requested.
There is a standard which you can follow, you know, the, the review criteria under section seven-point-four, it's seven-point-four point six. It says, in conducting site plan review, the planning board shall consider the following matters, protection of adjoining premises against seriously detrimental uses by provision. Seven-point-four point six, for, by provision for surface water drainage, sound and site buffers, and preservation of views, light, and air, so you've got a standard that you can apply.
Of the arrangement of parking.
Yeah.
Spaces.
Yeah.
Subjective.
Yeah, so I think you've got a standard there.
So I can, we could, so we can just be clear about it.
And you look at that language allows the board to give a waiver of the required setbacks?
No.
I don't either, I agree with Lee, that doesn't.
I mean, if you look at, I mean, if you look at this, the dimensional table, like a one, four, two, we basically say the board of appeals may grant a special permit, reducing the minimum front yard setback required by this footnote to no less than, than the dimension it stated. I mean, so when we establish the standard, we basically create a provision to grant a special permit, reducing it.
Well, here's a question, I mean, we are setting the zoning for this, this for district, okay, so why can we not set, why can't we set this up?
What's the process that we have to put in to grant the waiver?
The planning board may grant a special permit, reducing the minimum, whatever.
Right, she wants to use the language.
Setback required by this provision to no less than five feet.
Right, okay.
Okay.
The word.
So what, so what you're saying then is that the application requests a site plan review approval and, and requests a special permit to waive down to five feet.
Permit, waiving the.
If you need it, if you don't need it, you don't ask for it.
Yeah.
But then you've got the flexibility if you need it to get, you know, there's a, a scape clause.
Reg.
You guys are all so much more smart than I am in this thing, but I, what Bob just read. Flattery will get you everywhere.
He's trying, he's trying, Paul. What Bob just read, to me, years without your knowledge, is, does that not say, does that just not say, if it's five feet and you want it to be ten feet, you can make it ten feet?
Yeah, I don't think it does say, I don't think it does say that, but I, I guess.
No, because of the, the, it's part of the site plan review, it doesn't allow, no, okay.
No. Well, it's, it's a standard for the, there's a, somebody, somebody said, I forget which one it was, I should remember, but, said something to the effect that, you know, what standard, what would be the standard review, you know, for the, for, on this, on the question of granting this waiver or not granting it, and I'm saying the review criteria would give you that, so I think you have that.
But, you know, there is an alternative to what we're discussing now, which is, if you think about it, why do you want a setback for, for, of a part, of a parking lot from the side? You want it because you don't like the view, and it seems to me you can deal with that with landscape, can you? Well, I mean, can you put, can you, can you put trees or, can you put trees or a hedge in there to accomplish what you want to accomplish?
That's exactly, that's exactly what Natasha was saying, she, she was fine with five feet as long as it was, as long as it was landscaped.
As long as you had a buffer.
I will say that, that we, our lot line, the, the grass goes right up to a fence that's on the lot line, and so that five, there's nothing to prevent that five feet from being, planting whatever you want in it on the side.
I accept, if it's going to be used for some kind of.
No, not the town land, but.
Your own property.
Our own five feet on our side of the little ten-foot wide town strip, so there's ten, you know, eight point seven to ten feet, whatever there.
Yes.
And then five feet on the inside, and if you plant it with big, evergreen, rotted ends, you would never be able to see, or anything, you know, evergreen, you wouldn't be able to see through it.
Right.
I think the five feet would be fine, really.
As long as, as long as there's a buffer.
So now we're back to five feet, and we require a landscape buffer.
Yes.
And that landscape is not grass, it's actually shrubs.
It's a buffer.
It's a landscape, it's a landscape buffer.
Locking the headlights.
Right.
Landscaping is part of the site plan review.
Sure, and you have discretion to say whether it's going to be lawn, or it's going to be, you know, arborvitae, or it's going to be a tree, it seems to me that's within your, within your discretion.
It doesn't say screening, it says buffer, right?
Whatever we say for the, what do we say for the front?
Yeah, the front we said, we said landscape.
You could say the setback area shall be kept open and landscaped with grass or other materials.
Uh, no, like gra- grass, yeah, but grass doesn't cut it if we're talking about buffering the visuals and the headlights.
You're trying to buffer, because you're five feet away.
Grass doesn't cut it, it would have to be some type of shrubs of a certain, eventually.
Do you really want to micromanage?
Yeah. But isn't that already part of?
Yeah, you already have authority to require that.
That's my question, isn't that already part of the site plan review?
Yes.
Yeah, wait on that, just say landscape.
Yeah, yeah, we just.
Just say landscape, and then that landscape is part of the site plan review.
We said a landscape vegetated buffer area, that's what we say for the front, so can we just say the same thing?
Yeah, we said the same thing for the front, right, front said it should be a landscape vegetated buffer.
Just say the same thing for the side and the back then.
Leave it five feet with a landscape.
Vegetated buffer.
Vegetated buffer.
You satisfied, Natasha?
I just think you need some protection just from, you know, visibility.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, well, so.
Ninety, thirty, twenty-nine minutes ago.
Good, we don't want to make.
I'm gonna quote you on that one, that's on film.
And we refuse to be the, to have a record of the shortest meeting we accused.
Apparently, so, does anyone else have any other comments about zoning? So.
So I guess the motion is that with that change, we send the zoning article to the.
We recommend adoption.
No, no, no.
We don't, we, we send that, that form to the board, and we recommend, it's, it's adoption to town meeting in this form.
Thank you.
We have a mo.
Second.
We have a motion by Paul.
I just made.
I second that motion.
Well, I think Natasha had already seconded it before.
I, I thirded, so.
All right.
You're fourth, and Adam, people are fifth with this.
This is in article one.
Any, so this, and we'll take a separate vote for article two and then that change, so with respect to article one, to Paul's motion, all in, any discussion, hearing that, and I'll come to vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, as to article two, would someone like to make a motion to adopt the, that we accept. Article two as written, and that we recommend a town meeting to adopt.
Well, we send it to the Warren Committee.
We send it to the Warren.
We send it to the Warren Committee, and we recommend adoption at town meeting.
You have a motion by Paul, a second by Artie, any discussion, hearing that, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously, that brings us to the minutes of December nineteen.
Yes, that's.
Thank you. That brings us to, the December nineteen meeting, minutes, and on page five, we had one comment from Natasha. Yes, Mr. Crocker was asked if, I.
Talking about ground-mounted solar arrays.
Solar. S R B.
Mrs. Bata clarified, there is nothing under the ground mounted. I'm just, I just wasn't sure what was meant by, there is nothing under the ground mounted. Maybe you could clarify that.
Well, just because it, you know, you have the, you have the ground-mounted system, it's on top of the grass or on top of the ground, and it's just, and she's saying there's just nothing, there's nothing underneath it.
There's nothing underneath it.
I think it's fine as is.
All right.
The reason I ask that is because if, if, if eight feet is at the top, it's going to slope, it's going to be too. The space underneath it is going to be less than seven-six, or something people put, yeah.
Depending on the angle of that.
Depending upon the angle, it could be, it could be, so I was just confirming there was nothing underneath it.
Yeah, the total height, let's say eight feet.
The total height, you could, you could strike it, I mean, if you want to, it was just more, Mr. Crocker noted it was at the top, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Our Minnetec uses the word clarified a lot, and it seems to me it means that the speaker is clarifying, is saying, I'm, I just want to clarify that, in fact. I know there is nothing under the ground mounted, I want everybody else to know that.
Correct.
And, but sometimes it's used because the person asked the question, and somebody else answered the question, to say there is nothing under the ground mounted, and.
I would take it out, I would strike.
Just, just, just take the whole thing off, okay, all right.
And then further down, excuse me, and two more paragraphs in the middle, Mr. Crocker stated, the setback from the front would be at least twelve and a half feet, sentence, if there is no screening in the front, it would be pushed back to seventy feet.
I can't imagine anything being pushed back to seventy feet, so I don't know what.
Well, that was simply, that was simply referring to visuals, if, if, if there's, if there's screening in the front, it could be closer, if there's no screening, then it would have to be pushed back further, if it's.
And it would be just pushed back further.
Just pushed back much, much further, that's all, there was no, the seventy feet was just don't, not quite arbitrary, but it was something to push away from the road.
So we, we use the word further.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
To seventy feet.
Push, push back further from the.
That was so specific.
Yeah, we can just say push back further.
It was a special rule about seventy feet.
Someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of December nineteenth as redlined and further amended tonight?
So moved.
A motion by Artie, a second by Natasha, any discussion, hearing that, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This brings us to reports from Planning Director and Board members, Lee, you ready for us tonight?
Sure, I'd like to let you know that the home meeting had a special additional meeting last week for the purpose of analyzing both of the scenarios, scenario, we call them, I think, the base scenario, which is the scenario that basically gets us to compliance. It would add a production of about eighteen hundred units, and then the other, the add-on scenario, which, which to be renamed, which creates some greater build-out density, and they landed at something at around thirty-four. Um, which, um, creates, um, greater, um, build-out density, and they landed at something at around thirty-four, um. Three thousand four hundred units, I think, under that proposal, but the actual apartments that we have in our existing zoning, um, I think generates around seven hundred eighty. So, uh, it's, it's interesting, 'cause the base scenario, um, when you look at what the existing zoning profile currently allows, it's pretty close to the, um. It's only about a hundred, um, units off of what the base scenario creates, because essentially what it's doing is it's opening up housing in the Chestnut Street Business District. And converting it from, what was a mixed-use special permit process to an as-of-right process, and it's doing it at a relatively low density, even though that district allows you to do much higher by mixed use. Um, and it's all, it's recognizing the Avery Square, uh, building, um, and it's just basically introducing housing only in two districts where it's not currently allowed, which would be the industrial districts. And, um, well, the, I think the industrial district and the business district, which is the Sudbury Farms block, so its impact in terms of the unit production.
Is minimal.
Uh, under, when you look at the zoning framework, it's pretty minimal.
You're referring to the base scenario?
The base scenario.
Um, and then the add-ons essentially, um, just look at increasing density in the Chestnut Street corridor, um, from what was done in the base. Um, but it gets you pretty much just to the standards that you already have in the overly district by mixed-use by special permit. And the real increases there are coming in the business district and the industrial district.
But the big change is that it allows standalone housing.
But the big change is it allows that housing to be standalone, but that housing can be now produced in a mixed-use context.
It could be, of course.
It could be produced, and that, and those un- those unit counts are currently allowed in Chestnut Street, for example, in Avery Square, in a, in that mixed-use context.
Did Charles Court East come in, did Charles Court, Charles Court East?
We, we, we put that into both scenarios, we recognized it and counted it, which is, which is, but the unit, the total number of existing up units on the ground is, you know, around seven hundred and eighty. Um, and so the consultants, um, basically now doing the physical impact analysis for us, they're doing, um, um.
On both scenarios?
On both scenarios, um, they're doing, uh, a, a propensity for change model, which will kind of look at if we change the zoning, and we're looking at changing the zoning and enabling. The zoning, basically, and enabling these kinds of uses, what would the projected build-out be over a ten-year timeline? Um, so that's all coming together for the meeting, um, that's gonna be held this Thursday. And then the community meeting, which will be first presentation of all this material will be on the twen- is it twenty eighth, twenty eighth, twenty eighth?
Um, and we, Natasha, perhaps you remember, I don't know where I got this idea the past couple of days, but somebody told me that. The Avery condominium on Highland Avenue, uh, that I thought was approved as being part of both plans, is not going to be part of the plans, and I, I don't understand that, it's already developed for multifamily housing.
They kept it in the base, they took it out of the add-on, I think, because I, I think they, they wa- they were looking at trying to bring the number count down, so they.
Why? Oh, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, well, that was, that was it, I mean, and basically those, that parcel generated a certain number of units.
That are already there for the most part.
That's right, but they wanted to get lower than, you know.
Well, we.
Lower than what, thirty-four hundred?
They wanted to get at least a thirty-four hundred.
We were at four, so the, the base, it's, it's seventeen eighty-four is what we need, where we need to be, and we're, we're pretty, we're within the hundred.
Of that, for the base.
So it's pretty much the same exact zoning that we have now, so that's the base one, the, but, but it's as-of-right, um, where, right now, it's not necessarily.
Right, but introducing it really significantly in the business district and the industrial districts, where it's not currently allowed.
So, and, and what, sorry, hold on one second, I just wanna pause for a second, and when you say the business district, at what? At, at what unit count per acre, like eighteen units an acre?
Much higher.
It was much, I, I don't have it in front of me, I, I have all those numbers in a chart, which I should tell you.
I think it was twenty-four.
Think about, I thought it was thirty-six or something.
I don't think.
I'll get it.
It's, it's, it's okay, but my, my point is that, you know, being, you know, being in that, in that business, you know. We've, we've heard from, we've heard from other developers, and the CEA as well, that, you know, much less than fifty units an acre doesn't.
The business district is, was forty-two point eight is what, because the, the business district in the, in, oh, this is the bonus scenario.
Yep.
Uh, in the bonus, in the bonus, um, yeah, in the bonus scenario, it was just governed, we just got the numbers today after this rework, we're working on this one. It was just basically gu- governed by the dimensional requirements, so it's forty-two point eight.
Forty-two point eight, so you're at forty-three units an acre in the business district, that's a significant improvement.
But that's on the add-on, so.
That's in the add-on.
Right.
And are the, and under the base scenario, scenario A, is there any special permit provision?
No, you can't have.
So even, so even on the Avery Square, Hundred West Street scenario, there's no special permit now for the fourth floor?
The base is twenty-nine point five, base is twenty-nine point five.
Do you mind it?
A hundred west.
Is that resuming for Avery Square, the Carter's Building in the base scenario or not, I don't remember?
It's in the base, it's, it's in the base, I think, at, at the, um, can't remember what, I think it was, it was in the base at three stories.
With the fourth story.
I think the FAR was one, and then, um, we're also gonna allow by special permit, uh, the fourth story, and going up to an FAR of one point four.
So we are, and are there any other special permit provisions under scenario A?
No, that, that was just basically offered on the Carter Building.
Just to have, allow the fourth story, if it made sense.
So, the, the biggest thing was that we, the scenario B, let's say, came in at like over four thousand units, and so. We were trying to figure out how to make it.
Which, to be clear, is, would, would double the amount of existing apartments in, in town, in town.
We, we know, but the problem is that, not the problem, the, what we heard from the community was that there were people that wanted to keep it as the base. And there were people that wanted a lot of housing, and so we were looking at, but everybody chose half B, which is kind of medium housing, as their second choice. So we were looking at a way that the second option seemed palatable to both groups.
A balance.
A balance, a compromise for both groups, understanding that the areas that we took out, which was in the center business, we took out, um, there were a couple of different.
Churches.
The, all the churches, that we could review, the planning board and the Hersi area, we could review, the planning board could review those areas. And revise the zoning independent of the MBTA communities.
So now, now we're okay with, now, so we've gotten past that hurdle where we think is a concern. If we, if we view things separately from that and, and have that trigger a potential problem? Remember the conversations we're having with Ron, where if we, if we wanted to look at other areas to zone, to give more housing, how that maybe trigger, trigger a problem? With the MBT, with the, with the plans that we have?
Well, we wanna stay within the mandate of the MBTA communities, and we want to, most of it, ninety percent of it has to be next to one of, within a half a mile of the stations. We have the ten percent, which is on the Greendale, the Greendale Avenue project, which we added to both scenarios as also, um. Being, being, being more equitable to the town, because it's near Hersi, and we don't have a strategy for Hersi that would meet the MBTA's easily.
So, um. It's interesting, because the, the, the home committee has, um. I think kind of punted on a few, on a bunch of different areas, the planning board's gonna have to consider. For, you know, Hersi's one of them, under, understand, I'm not judging it, I'm just identifying.
If I wouldn't say punted, I said, we had to make the best decisions, but from what we heard from the community, to present to the community on the twenty eighth, that we think.
Well, right.
Are viable, and the correct density, and the cur- and, I mean, we feel like Chestnut, that area is under, underdeveloped.
Right.
And then we, and then, um, we also heard that we wanted to be equitable throughout, and then we also heard that, um, the industrial district on Hillside Avenue, we added an extra floor, and that felt too high. So we, we really tweaked it to make it the best plan possible for the town.
I'm not judging it.
And that requires us to, to take some things off the table, and that's what the planning board is gonna review separately.
And also, I think there's questions about what do you want to allow as a right, what do you want to allow through a special permit process, what do you want, where do you wanna require mixed use, and you're not really interested in standalone housing? I mean, so, I mean, MBTA was creating into certain, with certain parameters, it didn't give you flexibility to ask those questions. And where you might want to ask those questions when you're looking at other areas.
Right.
Because, because the underlying point of the whole thing is what? That we need to remove the regulatory burdens that inhibit, that inhibit housing production, and at what cost? At the, at the cost of jobs going to South Carolina, Texas, and other, and other areas, because we're not as competitive.
We understand all of that, but then at the same time, you're adding buildings that are much higher than the buildings that are existing there, we have to be careful that we put them in the right place, and that people feel comfortable with the dimensional zoning.
No doubt. No doubt.
Because what I found out from the meeting, Chris Heath came to talk to us, is that, um, there's little site plan review that will be allowed for those projects similar to the Dover Amendment. Those are things that the state has required for, for, for good reasons, except we never reviewed the zoning in some areas, and we have buildings that are too large in some areas that. The site plan review was ignored, right, so, or that doesn't really count, um.
So, I guess what'll end up happening is that, well, separate from home, there's gonna be over the course of the next thinking through to the planning calendar. Right, which hopefully successive leaders on the board will, you know, will continue, I think we're probably gonna be dealing with housing issues for the next five years through town meeting, and I also think. That, um, there, I, yeah, so we're gonna clearly be dealing with a number of these, like, uh, uh, their general residents? Isn't it really, like, I don't think Home is making a recommendation as to the general residents?
We're gonna, and we're taking, we have a list, I think that the whole idea is that the, the zoning that we do create, because it's as-of-right, we wanna make sure that we're really thoughtful about it.
Yeah.
And so that's why even this that I was looking at, I was making sure that all the houses were forty feet, because if this, that we're saying forty feet, and all the houses are at ninety feet, we wanna make sure that. It's complementary to the neighborhood and that it works well, and so I think it's gonna be a bigger job than I expected, because I think we really wanna be thoughtful that it's, if, if it's as-of-right. That the town feels comfortable of it being as-of-right, because I think our site plan review is minimal.
But and also, when you do, when you go to as-of-right, you can develop, you know, we could develop, if we wanted to get out of the way regulatorily, um, and not have a, a special permit process, we could have design guidelines. I mean, there could be prescriptive design guidelines for those districts that are looking at building envelopes, so that you feel more comfortable going to a faster regulatory process, because you've identified what the urban form is gonna look like. Um, 'cause right now, we're kind of managing all that really through a site plan approval process, but if we had prescriptive design guidelines for some of those other districts.
That's interesting.
We might feel more comfortable with a massive right process, so.
We would feel totally comfortable, right, that the as-of-right is, is something that, that, that everyone feels comfortable dimensionally and, and design-wise.
May I ask you a question, um, so I'm, I'm just getting back to the last meeting, and, and specifically in this case related to the center of town, so we're not including the center of town, is it, it, it offered its own issues going on. So then getting, so getting back to it, if there's, if the planning board wanted to do something separately, to increase the density in the center of town, which didn't have to follow the guidelines that the MBTA meeting had, are we gonna be able to do that?
Yes, yeah.
Is, is last meeting, the answer was no, without potentially getting to problems, the answer was no, essentially.
Well, you'll be able to do what you want to do there.
We can do what we want to do.
We don't have to follow the guidelines of the MBTA communities, we can follow the guidelines of making good housing for the.
Yeah, good housing for the.
Not that the other one isn't good.
In good, good combination of business for the, in the center of town, increase in the density and what we can do there without creating something that we don't want.
Right, you'll be able to, if you want mixed use in a certain block, you'll mandate it, if you want, if you want, you know, a, a more robust permitting process with more discretion, you can do that.
If you have new design guidelines, well, we have design guidelines, but if you wanna augment them, you can do that.
But, but as long as we are not impacting the other acreage, we can deal, we can do our own, we can do what we want on those acreage.
As long as you don't undermine what you've already done, take it away, you can add on density beyond that.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, 'cause that was the big question last time.
Well, the rea- the, the, uh, what we did when they changed the guidelines, uh, a few months ago, so that, um, mixed use could count. As, as long as, in, in area that allow mixed use, um, could count, uh, but then they introduced various things, like, strangely, you cannot, for the commercial uses, you cannot require any parking.
Yeah, various things like that.
And we said, what would you say, we just can't do that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't work for our town.
It's becoming very complicated.
So, it doesn't, all that meant is, a little like, a few extra units we might have gotten, if we were able to count these mixed-use areas, we're not going to get. But we found other ways to get the units, but we can go back and do that.
Well, that's, that's the key, that's the key. Yeah, and that's what, that's what we're gonna wanna do, we're gonna wanna go back to the center of town.
Exactly.
And create something that's best for you.
And we don't, we don't have to go through a special process of getting approval by the executive office of housing and liberal communities, because it's, it's outside of this compliance.
Yes, that's the, that's the key.
And to be clear, when you say it's outside, because it's not within that district?
Well, that, that's right, it's not affecting any of the districts that we not would, proposing to be zoned, uh, to comply with the MBTA communities.
So we can, we can zone any other part of town, produce other housing with, preserving whatever controls we choose to. Even if some of that area may actually be included in the MBTA district?
We have, we have to do something above what we've already shown, we can't do something, we can't take anything away.
Can't take anything away, and the state's gonna wanna see what you did, just to make sure, that, they're gonna keep their, their.
So any futures, so any future zoning, let's take a look at, let's say already wanted.
And in the MBTA communities as-of-right areas that we're approving, that the town is approving.
Any, anytime you start to amend that, the state's gonna wanna see what you're doing, and they're gonna wanna know.
They're afraid you're gonna take it away.
Are you doing this by creating a new district, call it like the MBTA district?
We're in the process, we're in the process of working.
We're trying to figure that out. So let's assume for a second we're talking about.
Yeah, we, we need to figure out what we're gonna do first, and then we're gonna work out in the past.
Let me try and understand a couple of things, if we're, if we, let's say we call this new thing the MBTA district. And, uh, and Artie, and Artie and other members on the board decide that they want to, um, they wanna promote more housing and mixed use. Either as-of-right or by, uh, with a more prescriptive form, or by special permit, increasing the height, let's say, uh, to three or three and a half stories. On Great Plain, uh, west of, um, west of Chapel, and, uh, and then towards Pickering and Warren. Um, from Highland Avenue, for instance, um, and by doing that, which would, um, that won't have any adverse impact. And it would not have to go to, I guess the Attorney General already analyzed, has to approve our zoning anyways.
Yes.
So they would do it with this act in mind, but is there any adverse impact that would have on, on the MBTA district that we've been created?
Well, anything we propose, you cannot change, anything that we propose for MBTA communities that creates the amount of units that we are proposing that's approved, we can't decrease, we can always add.
Right.
We just can't decrease.
Within that district, but how would you be decreasing it?
Well, because people might, might pass it, and then all of a sudden wanna decrease it, because they're doing some.
Change the parking standard, like from one to one point five.
And then all of a sudden, it doesn't meet the requirements anymore.
Could I ask the question a different way? We, we, we pass a zone which gives us, I don't know, thirty-eight hundred more units, or somewhere around it.
Well, that's, that's a zone number considering that there's nothing on the ground today.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I didn't see that, but we're, but we're, we're getting something passed which gives us that many units within the MBTA half-mile radius, and then the ten percent of it. Then sometime later, and then sometime later on, we realize, you know, really for the town, it would be best if we zoned these acreages like this, and part of that acreage cuts into that thirty-eight hundred. By, 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 by three hundred units, you know, they would review it, but as long as we're still above the threshold of seventeen eighty, as, as long as we're above that, we can still modify anything above that.
Yes, as long as you don't get rid of your, what you gave them as-of-right for housing.
Well, no, but that's, that's, but that's, but what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, we are, for example, if two hundred of those units now fall under a special permitting area, because we feel that's best for how we wanna do need them.
But we can't zone it that way.
No, that's what, that's, that's, that's my point, that's my point, if we zone, if we zone thirty-nine hundred units in this, all this acreage, you know, as no, as, as of right. as, no, as, as a right, we cannot take any of that back. Even one hundred units, two hundred units, we can't, we can't take any of that back, even if it's still well above the seventeen eighty.
That's a good question, because that's above the, that was above-
Still well above the seventeen eighty.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a very good question.
Can you ask that to town council?
Yeah, well, I, I think, you know, you're, you know, that's a very good question because, you know, you're, you're only required to do a certain number, and you've done something more. So what flexibility do you have to play with that? I, all these things are kind of, you know, happening.
And some of the stuff they don't even know yet. We have to ask them, and then they have to review and get back to us. But that's, that is a good question. As long as you're over the seventeen eighty-four.
There's the question.
Can we find out between the town council and the consultants?
Sure.
Uh, because that would-
I think that's a, a valid concern as far as how far we push it, if we can't take anything back.
And, and we have practically sixteen to seventeen hundred units right now zoned. And how much has been built in the past ten years?
Two.
Well, there are.
I mean, so we're, I mean, we're zoned at four stories in the Chestnut Street corridor and an FAR of two point zero. But I think it's the, you know, the pro, the problem is a part, is part of its parcel size and the ownership of it.
Yeah, parcel size.
I mean, I-
You don't think, you don't think that-
And in a Needham Center, I mean, think it's all, that's pretty densely, that, you know, it's the ownership, the tenants are already in those buildings. I thought actually when we did the planning-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. That's actually not accurate. Because we have, we've had a conversation with a developer who bought the land at eight-eighty-eight Great Plain. And in order to be able to do a mixed-use development totally outside of, uh, of, of MBTA, he was looking for, uh, zoning relief.
He was in a residential district. He wasn't in the commercial district. The commercial district would have given him at that location, that, 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 at that part of Great Plain Avenue, it's, it was a three-story profile. But farther up Great Plain Avenue, the four-story profile.
With what, uh, parking and with what FAR unit per acre restrictions?
In the overlay districts, there are, there are no restrictions. I mean, you see, the center is set, was set up so that the base zoning was two and a half stories, um, an FAR of one and eighteen units per acre, um, density. The overlays were set up in Needham Center, one at four stories. Um, no, um, just the volume of the building, limiting the number of dwelling units. So you didn't have that, you didn't have a dwelling unit constraint. Uh, you had an FAR that went up to two. Um, but you had, but you had a parking requirement, which could have been part of the problem, was at one point five. It's now coming down to one in the, in the MBTA overlay. So, um, I, when we did the planning in two thousand nine, I didn't think that, I thought the center would be slow. I thought the Chestnut Street corridor would have been, would have redeveloped faster with a hospital expansion and just-
But it hasn't.
But it hasn't.
Like you're saying, it's probably, possibly the parcel size.
Now Ted Owens, who was on the planning board, um, when he, I think when he was elected, he, that was his, real interest in trying to see that corridor get redeveloped. And he invited a lot of the property owners in to have conversations with them and, you know, taught, had conversations about, um, could there be some kind of entity that was created where they all collectively came together? And there was a shared ownership structure? Would they be interested in it? It's just in, you know, people had their own little beefed ups and-
And eight-eighty, uh, Great Plain Avenue abuts, um, Needham Center overlay district A. And that's the same district that the Denham Avenue four-story of, um, multifamily mixed use was developed. So it would be able to be developed in that same manner.
If it was one property, oh, that, if the district was extended.
If the district were extended.
Yeah, if it were extended, yeah. It was always, if it was extended.
Which is, which is, uh, and that property you mentioned at fifty Denham, I think, was at, at a standard of close to fifty units an acre. Wasn't exactly, but I think it was.
No, it wasn't, because I think they used, well, I mean, what, what they, because they had some surface parking there. They just really take advantage of the lot. They use it for surface parking.
They had twelve, I think they had twelve units, and if you divide it by the, and you divide it by the lot, because it's a small lot.
They have a pretty high.
It was, yeah, when I did a study on that, it was, it was-
Because the parking lot was with the building in the front.
That's why when I, when Natasha and I, and at some point the board were, was looking at a plan that, that the developer had brought in, and there was some pushback to the forty-something or fifty units an acre, that actually wasn't context. That was my point with fifty, with fifty Denham Avenue.
Well, yeah, but the context was that was between businesses. That, that one was between two businesses where eight-eighty is, it's at the end, it's across from a park, where church is right there around business. I mean, it was, it was a different context.
That business is across the way.
Well, I, I, I understand, but that's, I, no, I get it. No, I, I get it. Let's not have, let's not have this conversation now. Let's not have the conversation now.
So I, just, the, the other point is, you know, are there, um, are there other items do, would Hone prefer to send a town meeting instead of two articles, more articles to separate out some of these other?
No, you know why not? Because it's hard enough to get those two. We don't, we have a very limited amount of time to do it. We want to make sure that we, we do two articles that are, you know, that the community has input. And I think creating all these different articles would make confusion. And, and I don't think we have the time to do it, right? Do we have time to model anymore?
I'm not saying to, to model anymore, but, you know, this kind of, unless there's other more reports that you have or anyone else has. Uh, brings us to correspondence. And I'm asking these questions because I think Dan Matthews, uh, we have a correspondence from him, uh, from February twenty-five, uh, related to Hone under the scenario A and scenario B. And he's made a number of, I think, very smart and wise, uh, comments for us to think about as a matter of policy and as a matter of strategy before town meeting. And if, you know, if Hone knows better, you know, because the planning, point is the planning board, we have to take immediate ownership of this. This is ours. It's not Hone. It is the planning board. We're going before a town meeting, and we have what? How much time do we have between, um, the time the recommendation is made from Hone to the planning board meeting, a meeting jointly with the select board, and then sending it up to the, um, to the three-month review process by the state, like we have a week or something? Right? So there's no time-
Next, next in no time.
So there's no point, there's no opportunity for the planning board to make any other-
I'd like to, I took Mr. Matthews' very good memo, and I checked off those parts of his memo that we actually have done. Under scenario A, he, he made one, two, three, four, five, six points.
Yes.
And we did five of them. Um, on scenario B, um, I couldn't quite understand a, a couple of, of, of his points. Um, and the only one I put an X on, no, we didn't do that, was extending the zoning to eight-eighty-eight Great Plain Avenue. And I happened to be speaking with Mr. Matthews at a social function last night at the History Center, and he seemed quite pleased with the way we have responded to his concerns.
So the next item of correspondence we received was dated, uh, also in email, uh, dated February twenty-eight from, uh, Susan Wobbe, a town meeting member. Uh, she's on Webster Street. Um, uh, with respect to, um, the Affordable Housing District and her support, having attended the hearing, uh, her support for the, uh, draft of zoning that we had already prepared. Uh, I can't remember if we have other items in the packet. There was an updated packet. Is that, did I miss anything, Alex?
No, this is the other packet.
It was just a, a letter from, um, both about the hospital.
So I appreciate this robust discussion about Hone because the planning, this is the planning board's, you know, uh, uh, article, which is fine, and yet, um, and yet there's, there's, you know, there's no time for the planning board to really reconsider. Uh, so it's important that we understand it as it's happening.
I agree.
You know, as the, and support it, all of us, uh, support it. Um, does anyone else have anything? Someone would like to move, we adjourn. Would you like to move to adjourn?
Yes, also moved.
We have a motion by, uh, Natasha, seconded by already any discussion. Hearing that, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please, sign above by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.